This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, well, I'd like to call the meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to order on this Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. A small meeting room at the lower level of the main library. And we have a president physically here, myself, and Tom Engelmann. And on the phone, we have Maggie Mato, Amanda Mato, and Valveka. Oh, sorry. I'll make the trip on. Got to get all the last names.
And Marion.
Oh, and Marion Magid, our council liaison. So, thank you, everyone, for taking the time to join us. And we'll continue on with the, begin the agenda here. The first item is the consent agenda.
Hello, I'm here now.
Oh.
It's Sylvia.
Hi Sylvia, thank you. Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I move.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Second, Malveka.
Okay, thank you, Valveka. So, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any one opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. We have no one, so we'll get that item. Next item is reports. Whoever report for the friends?
Um, Laura's not here, but I can report that I think we're not sure exactly what we're going to do about the Friends Annual Meeting, which was scheduled for middle of April. So, we'll have more information coming out about that based on whether or not, you know, what restrictions are on in place at the time in terms of the meetings. We may have a virtual meeting to elect officers and do some of the business that has to happen. So, look for updates on that. We did go ahead and we canceled the April 30th planned fundraiser for the Capitol Campaign. And we wanted to make sure we were prudent and conservative in doing that because we wanted to cancel before we would be obligated to pay the performer. So, and given everything that's happened, I think that that was a good decision. We're looking at and starting to discuss, is it possible and what would that look like to do a virtual public campaign for the Capitol Campaign using social media and things like that? Some sort of really kind of coherent, you know, planned out fundraising campaign that hopefully that might work for us to kick off the public face of the campaign. So, not exactly sure what that looks like, but we're going to take.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Anything for finance, Tom?
When I was looking at the budget comparison, I mean, it looks pretty good. I mean, in terms of, we're two-thirds of the way through the year and both expenses are running a little behind that. So, it's like management's been trying to prove in terms of tiny spending. So, looks good.
Tom? Next committee report would be personnel. Have anything to report, Amanda?
No, nothing for personnel.
Okay, thank you. Next item, advocacy. Valveka, is there anything to report for your?
Oh, as I said the last time, Riverbank Food Bank is still doing their backpack program and they would be happy to have us if we can go. No force at all here. It's April 8th, which is a Saturday, and there are three times, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., 10:30 to 12:30, and 1:00 to 3:00. And they have a basic, they have a few basic requirements with the virus thing going on, which I think I should have shared with you by email. Maybe I should do that after the meeting. So, they have that, that was one. Two, I was, I have been very heavily talking with the Iowa Department of Transport for the library special plates for the cars. And I've come, I've come to a certain point where the one, if I want anything got to do specific with like, you know, I love libraries kind of a plate, I need to, and I have been told I need to go through the legislature for it, but that's a big story for later. So, these are just the two things that I wanted to kind of share with you all.
Okay, thank you very much, Valveka. Okay, next item is director's report.
Okay, well, really a lot has changed since I wrote this. So, we are, the libraries are closed. I think we indicated two weeks, but I would say until the circumstance changes. And we're just kind of working through that as we go. The way we're handling staff time right now is, the city has said that staff is not working, chooses not to work, at least we're doing that for the next two weeks. They can use any accrued leave that they have. So, they can use sick leave, they can use holiday leave, they can use vacation leave, but it has to be a leave that they accrued. After we kind of get through that additional two weeks, I think the initial concern was, you know, people want to take the leave and they have it, have them do it because if we're going to pay you, you got to be here and you got to be working. So, we're not, we don't, we don't, and the city doesn't want to pay people if they're not working. So, we have since had some discussion about there are potentially other things that we can do other than just have the drive up window at Fairmont open to provide library services safely for members of the community. So, we're going to be taking a look at what those things are, what would be the procedure, how could we safely do that? And that will probably change how we do our scheduling patterns. So, for example, we have, we could run a modified version of curbside pickup here at Main as we're calling people about holes that they have at Main waiting for them to pick up. We're hearing from a lot of people saying, it doesn't do me any good to tell me that I could drive up to the window at Fairmont because I have no vehicle. I can't get there. So, so we're looking at some of those ideas and what kinds of things we can do safely. We'll be doing a lot on social media. Have a whole variety of things, including, you know, videos on how to sign up for E-Card TV and all those kinds of things to help folks out as much as we can. And we're going to be taking the Mobius link off of the catalog for the time being. Most of those libraries are closing down. And that way, there won't be as much material going back and forth there. Let's see, what else about that? Oh, we have, you'll notice in your miscellaneous revenue and expense, the Open Access Access Plus budget line is pretty darn healthy. So, I asked our ebook selector to spend an additional $15,000 on ebooks to beef up that collection as we're going to be expecting more use of that as people turn to ebook. So, I'm doing that. I think that's it for closing right now unless anybody else wants to offer anything or people have questions. We're, we're share, our consortium is meeting by conference call this afternoon and we'll be deciding like, we're going to, we want to extend due dates. So, for people who have things out right now, we want to extend the due dates, but we want to be as consistent as possible on how we handle that. So, so we don't extend by three weeks and then Bettendorf extends by four weeks and Leclerc extends by five weeks. We want to be able to be as consistent as we can with that to make it easy for people to figure out.
You don't need any action from us for that? That can be done administratively?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that we can do administratively. And in all honesty, we closed the library without getting your permission, sorry. Sorry. I guess I treated that as kind of like when we close for inclement weather. But if you believe that we would like some ready motion authorizing us to be closed until we open. It would have to be on the agenda. So, so we'll keep you up to date. We are working with, I think it's a really great idea and I was really happy to see it that there seems to be a quad citywide group that's meeting and Marion probably knows more about that than I do. But, so we didn't close until we knew what all the other public libraries in the quad city were doing and we all did the same thing at pretty much the same time with the same message. So, with all the confusion of the information that's being shared about the whole situation, this is trying to have a unified message as much as possible as we can in a bi-state area. So, that I think has been helpful, it's certainly been helpful to us so that we're being consistent.
And just, and while we're on that, you know, we might even want to consider taking some action if something like this isn't in place already, just to give you the permission to, you know, to close the library anytime there's an emergency or something like that, just to cover these things if we think that's necessary. Talk about that.
I think that would be wise, put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Sort of retroactively approve it. I guess from my perspective, I presume there's been discussions with the union about how these situations for staff is going to occur going forward, assuming everyone has enough leave for the immediate future.
Yeah.
About how do we deal with it two weeks out, a month out, if we're still in the same situation?
So, the city, they met with the unions this morning and we haven't heard the results of that meeting yet. They met with representatives from each bargaining unit to get approval of a side letter that would basically have the unions be saying that that they'll work, you know, their employees will work in whatever location at whatever assignment they have during the duration. So, if employees use all their accrued leave and they don't have any leave to take, we will have work for them to do. So, they can continue to report and we'll have work for them to do. Maybe it's not library work, it might be something else. Some of the other departments have things, working with the archival records and things like that, that they would like to have us work on as perfectly or to do that kind of stuff. And so, there's, there's going to be a lot of that kind of work going on. So, but right now, the message we have from the city is that if people are going to be paid, they're going to be working or they're going to be using accrued leave. So, the big modification that they've made is that you can use accrued sick leave for this leave without officially, you know, being sick. So, so that's, so that's how they're handling it.
Good.
So, you know, is, if we move on, you know, we get further and further into this, you know, could something change? I'm sure it could, but that's how we're, they're handling it right now. So, one thing that we, you might want to think about is plans for an addition, for the next meeting, for the next trustee meeting. Do it the same way. I think that this is probably a safe way to do it. Do it virtually and then have, mostly virtually and then have a place for members of the public to attend, especially if there's business that we need to have done, timely business. Otherwise, Steve, you probably got some contact from, or maybe not, from some liaisons saying, if you don't have to meet, feel free to not meet. So, that's an option as well. So, let's see. Oh, and then just a quick FYI, I was going to talk a little bit more about it, but circumstances got in the way. So, the Personnel Committee had, had asked that we survey the staff to get their ideas in terms of communication and is the library welcoming to staff members and all those kinds of things. So, we have done that, that survey and we got a 90, what was our return rate?
96.
96% return rate. So, we did pretty well with that. There were no open-ended questions, slow that down. And so, we'll be sharing that information with you at some point in time when we have a chance to kind of look at it and maybe get more people in the room for that. So, we did discover that if you brought people with pizza, you can get them to fill out our survey.
Amy, was that kind of the circle one to five agree or strongly disagree that you and Matt and I kind of talked about a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you for doing that.
Sure. I think that's it. I might think of something. I think that's it.
How's the truck coming? The owl?
We got pictures. They pulled it into their, their bay to work on it.
Where, where, who's bay?
In Matthew's Specialty Vehicles in North Carolina.
Okay.
So, it is pulled into the bay and they are working on it. So, that's happening. Of course, now we're going to take delivery and we're not going to be able to do anything with it.
It was in the bay of the graphics place.
No, they're going to put the graphics. Yeah, we sent them all the files.
Oh, okay.
So, they're all ready to put the graphics on too. So, so this, I should qualify, this was a white fan of the style that we ordered. We have no guarantee that it's our white fan, but it was able, it took a picture of it and told us it was ours.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay. I have to trust them. Okay, let's see. Next item, next report would be council liaison. Marion, you have anything today?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to kind of update you. I was downtown, I went downtown yesterday for their, just to share with you what's going on with this consortium. It is more than a consortium. It is the official, I guess, emergency management, EMA plan. I guess the term used is it's been stood up. So, it really, it involves communities across Scott County, but also communities in Illinois. And I was, I went, I went on the call, I sat in on the call yesterday. I don't know if I'll be able to do that every day, but, you know, so I kind of, I think I can share many of the communities in Rock Island County and Scott County kind of reported out what they were doing. Obviously, this is an evolving situation. But just to let everybody know, and that things like the side letter were discussed yesterday that Amy referenced, and so things are moving quickly. And of course, we're all dealing with an unknown situation. So, I don't think anybody's ever dealt with this before. But that, there are a number of calls going on every day in conjunction with this group. There is 8:00 a.m. call, there is, there are public information officers calls and Sarah Ott is the, is our PIO for the city. And they, the plan is to regularly push out some sort of news release about, you know, that brings people information. So, I think the lack of information, the lack of, you know, just not knowing how does this structure work is, you know, leaves people with questions sometimes. So, literally, I think every city, every city was on that call. And I, you know, I didn't obviously talk, I was there to listen from the smallest to the largest. So, the county will be coordinating for some of the smaller communities that say don't have a PIO, they'll, they'll coordinate through Scott County. And obviously, you know, this morning, I don't know if you've seen this, but the governor has limited the gathering of people to ten, no more than 10. So, over 10 will not be able to gather. So, that was ordered this morning. And closing, of course, the restaurants except for carryout and drive-through, bars, that, that kind of thing. So, in terms of, of, you know, we do have our management update meeting today and we have city council meeting tomorrow night. I have emailed this morning and said in light of the governor's edict this morning, because there are virtual options for those meetings, you know, what is going to be happening. So, I don't have an answer to that yet. But I'm, you know, certainly pushing that we have our management update meeting because we need to be, whether it's virtual or, you know, virtually done or done in person because we really need to be able to keep responding, you know, we, there's things we need to do right now. And so, but we're, you know, it is still an evolving thing. I do want to thank the library particularly. We were not able to march, of course, St. Patrick's Day Parade was canceled, but the library staff did some wonderful numbers and perhaps we will have a chance to do that at some point again in maybe better weather and happier times. In any case, and the, we have a, we had for the census, a door hanging campaign, which we have put on hiatus. It was supposed to be this upcoming weekend. And with the, the changes happening so fast, I felt like it was best to kind of put a pause button on that. We do have a huge opportunity for the census because that people are at home. And so, if we can encourage them to go ahead and get it done because they're probably going to be looking for things to do if they're sitting at home, this might be something. So, I'm trying to look at that as an opportunity and how do we, how do we manage that opportunity to try to, they're going to be likely more in touch and more available by telephone and things like that. So, still working through that as well. But right now, you know, the, the parks have, they have closed certain things and I have a feeling more will be closed today, as Amy said, the library yesterday. And there are a number of things that staff will not be doing perhaps as aggressively as they've, some, in some areas, whether it's, the commissions have been asked if the matter before them is not urgent to, you know, to, if the person applying, you know, the commission of PNC or whatever, if it can be delayed to delay it. I have a feeling we'll be going to more, more and more virtual meetings. And I don't know how that plays out in terms of them being, you know, live as well. So, but all, so the city is looking at generally over sort of backing off sort of non-essential, non-critical items that they don't have to do right now in terms of public works or fire department. And I, and I, again, I think, I think we all feel this is a time of transition and we're, we're going to get to some, you know, we're going to get to some point where what we're able to do and control is, you know, we've done everything we can and I think we all feel like we're probably not there yet. So, and so, there will be, I would, I'm guessing some sort of, okay, here, this is where we are. I don't know anything about, for instance, things like party in the park. I'm not even asking anybody right now because they're so busy dealing with the right now stuff. So, I'm starting to look further out. I am very concerned about the census because I heard that they might not be sending census workers or they're going to, they're not sure how they're going to do that. And that would, that would start in May. And so, I need, I think we need to be thinking about that. Our census committee is actually going to meet again next Monday virtually. We met virtually yesterday to brainstorm some ideas. I think, again, everybody's, we're kind of dealing with what is the, what's the, what's the, what's going to be the state for a while? And we were not there yet. So, in any case, that's a little bit of a jumble, but that's what I have. I did have one question for Amy and this is, you know, I realized I haven't renewed my library card. So, if people are going to be using the library more, and they might be, especially the digital stuff, do you have ways of renewing people's or getting people, you know, a library card in this, in this, you know, when, when you're not open? I guess that's my question.
Yeah.
And it might be something people will ask.
Yeah, and so, we, we have our new library app, which just rolled out, has a way for people to apply for library cards. And we're also looking at just doing some automatic renewal of library cards that are expiring. So, we're looking at that. And we do have also a digital library card or virtual library card that people can apply for that's on our website and that gives you access to digital materials, so.
That might be a good social media thing Kurt might, that Kurt might push out or you guys, that might be something he would be interested in?
Yeah, they're working on pushing that out and then Kurt usually shares what he wants or what he sees there.
Right.
So, we'll be getting that out, so.
Okay, thanks. That's it for me.
Thank you, Brad. I just had one question, so we've been talking a lot about virtual this and that. There was an item in the electronic list of payments for, for the, I think, computer discount warehouse Skype for Business license. Is that for the library to use Skype or is that something that patrons can use?
That is, that's our, kind of our link intranet piece, which right now, I think they call it link, but it's moving to something called Skype for Business. So, that's what that is.
And patrons Skype from library computers?
If they have access, I mean, I think you need your own account.
Okay.
To do that, so.
Guess wouldn't be exactly private either. Okay, just curious. Okay, moving on, new business. Okay. Yeah, the first, first item on the new business has to do with the library circulation policy.
That was a policy that was discussed at our, the trustee's last meeting and you did not have any staff recommended changes to it.
So, does any, let's see, we have a motion to approve the library circulation policy? Okay, thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Amanda.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the library circulation policy is very discussional. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the library circulation policy as it is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, declare the motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda has to do with extending the library hours in light of the new budget money we are anticipating and thankful for. So, the next item is a motion to change Fairmont and Eastern Avenue branch hours to be open until 8:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday evenings beginning June 1st, 2020, pending funding approval from city council. I have a motion.
I move the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I second. I second, Malveka.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
I was going to say, we have a friendly amendment, given the current circumstances.
But a question, the hours then would be consistent across all of our libraries?
No, we would still have two mornings a week closed at the branches.
Okay, but staying open till 8:00 o'clock at night?
That's.
Will be all three libraries, assuming the coronavirus goes away?
Correct.
Okay. So, just to clarify, the friendly amendment is?
So, given the fact that we don't know when our hours are going to go back to normal and it's difficult to hire staff and not know when they're, we want them to start, we would like to propose that that be changed to say, instead of beginning June 1, 2020, to be as soon as practical pending that funding approval.
I move the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Malveka, you have the second? Are you okay with the amendment?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so, we have a motion to change the Fairmont and Eastern Avenue branch hours to be open until 8:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday evenings, beginning as soon as practical, pending funding approval from the city council. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item, discussion of the status of the capital campaign for library renovations.
So I wanted to just give an update in terms of where we are with, with the capital campaign, what funds we have already, including the funds available. So that line shows the CCI P funds, the campaign pledges to date, the library levy funds authorized by the board, and then the Friends Benefactor Fund, which they've given us indication they would plan to contribute to the project. That gives us right now a total of just under one point three million dollars. We've already incurred some expenses. So we're taking into account those, those expenses are about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then the renovation estimates plus incurred comes to about one point nine million dollars. So that's the total project cost you see way down at the, at the bottom there. And then I listed out some other possible funding sources, just to give folks a chance to start thinking about that. One big possible funding source is additional library levy reserve. The Friends have not had a chance to talk about what kind of donation they might make or pledge out over a number of years. We have an application in to Carver. They indicated, well, that they plan to meet on April seventeenth. Whether they'll still do that, hopefully they'll still be able to do that and make some notifications. The US Bank grant, I think is about the same, similar notification. The Friends fundraiser is on hold right now. We're still waiting to hear from the Leap Family Fund. Bectol is also on here as a poss, not on here, but is an additional possibility. And we are still continuing to make fundraising calls. So we're making a call this afternoon. And there's another one that's scheduled over the next couple of weeks. So we're still continuing to, to make those asks. We have some library accounts that we've identified. We also believe we could pull money from, for the project with the trustee's approval. So that, if those things all work and with some of those estimates, you can see that we are getting pretty close to being able to meet the projected costs. So whatever additional money we can raise, those current, is clearly money that we don't have to pull from other library accounts. So that would be, I think, for us to do that. But I just wanted to give you that kind of quick summary estimate of where we are. And then the impact of potentially some additional library levy reserve money on the project. So does anybody have any questions about that?
I do have a question. I don't have any issue with us using more of a library reserve. I just wonder if we could, if we do decide to proceed with that, if we somehow made it a challenge that, okay, we'll release additional three hundred thousand of the library reserve levy pending we get another three hundred thousand of pledges. I mean, that could be Bectol, that could be, you know, other funding sources. I mean, I, I will put my thoughts in the, on paper and I will send it out by email. So we can get that going around. I mean, that's an idea.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly propose that.
Because I know, like, for example, the RDA and the SCRA, they all like the idea of matching stuff. And so that just might just fit into that.
Okay. One thing too, did a little bit, little bit of looking back, and just in case anybody has any thoughts or concerns about use of the library levy. I went back and looked, that was a ballot issue. So I went back and looked to see what the question was on the ballot, to see if there's any restrictions on it. Our library levy does not have an ending date. And also, it speaks to use of the funds in very broad language. It only says that the funds would be used to support the library. So we don't see any, you know, any restrictions in there that was set for materials or, you know, any specific, specific type of use. Okay, no other questions on that item. We'll move on to the next item, which is a motion to approve approve the following recommendations of the QC COVID nineteen coalition.
Oh, right. I forgot to run them for the printed packet.
Okay.
And I didn't even remember. I mean, we had this conversation.
Yeah.
So, so we don't know what the coalition might recommend for other actions in the future or in terms of open and closed dates. So we thought that if we wanted to get a blanket approval for, for things from the Board of Trustees to follow their recommendations, that that would basically cover our current closing too. But that just means that if, if we get another recommendation, say that they say we don't want any of your staff to come to work, I'm just making stuff up, that we wouldn't need the trustees to approve that, or we don't want you to have a drive-up window at Fairmont, or, you know, all those kinds of things. So that would be all kind of following their recommendations. And that would be how we would move forward during the current emergency.
I move the motion.
Yeah, let me, just let me restate the motion because I thought maybe something was misworded here and I stuck in a word that isn't there, which now I feel would change it. So the motion is to approve following recommendations of the QC COVID nineteen coalition. Just to clarify, I previously stuck the word the following and there is nothing here. So there are none that are on the table right now. This is just to follow the recommendations of the QC COVID nineteen coalition. So you okay with that, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve that. And that item, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Maggie or Malavika?
Sorry, Malavika.
Oh, Malavika, okay. Okay, so the motion and second to approve the item to follow the recommendations of the QC COVID nineteen coalition. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And I think that brings us to the end. Unless there's any questions?
Oh, Steve, Malavika. And Steve, Amy, I, I, I got a, I got one question about the digital access card. And this is one of my neighborhood watch people was asking. They have this, they have our physical card, ten-four Public Library physical card. And she was saying, can I access online resources using the physical card that I have?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and, and she just has to go to the area on the, on the website which says digital, there is, I'm, I'm trying to go there right now as I speak. Digital content. We have a section on our website that says digital content. And they can just go on that area where we have Overdrive, RB Digital, Freegal and Tumble Books and Acorn TV. And they, they can access whatever they need through here using their physical card.
Right.
Okay, got it. Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, if there's no other business to come before this board?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, thank you. All those in favor by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for taking your time to do the library business. We'll be at that.